So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Everybody, welcome. Happy Friday. And happy first, like Mr. Gohin said, happy first week or end of the first week of remote learning. And congratulations to our staff and our families and students for a successful week. Again, we know it's new for a lot of us or for everyone. So no matter what happened this week, it's been a success. And sure, there are some things that I'm sure we can work out. But congratulations to everybody on a first week. So welcome, welcome to staff, welcome to board members, welcome to all of those community members who are watching today. We're glad to have you with us on a Friday. And before I go into our board norms and read our board norms, I do just want to recognize the significance of today's date, being September 11. And want to honor all of those victims and families of those victims who have been impacted by the tragic events that happened on September 11th that continue to impact families all across the world. And so all of our servicemen and women who have dedicated their life and commitment to serving our communities, we honor you. And so I would just ask if we could just maybe take a quick moment of silence to recognize the moment, the day. And so, yeah, so if we could just take a quick moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Again, thank you to all our servicemen and women out there who continue to serve and protect all of us. And thank you for your service and commitment. So I'll start by reading our board norms as we do at every board meeting. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder on how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine that we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that, I would ask Ms. Smith if you would do a roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew. Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Dr. Jaeger.
AC president, and Maxine is logging in now. She was having some problems.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, everybody. We will go ahead and get started with our agenda as Ms. Drew. Well, first, I guess I would need entertain a motion to approve the special agenda for today.
Second.
Moved and seconded in discussion. Leslie, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
AC, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody. So moving on to the board discussion, agenda item A, we are reviewing and accepting for third read that the post changes to policy AH. So Greg, I'll pass it over to you. Do you need me to pull that up on the shared screen?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I think that'd be the best.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Is that the right one?
I'm not seeing anything yet.
Oh.
It's kind of, it says, it started sharing the screen, so.
Hmm, let me try that again.
Yeah, it didn't work.
This is KN.
We can do that one first if you want. I don't think the, I don't think the order matters.
I don't know why it's not pulling up the right one, but we'll try it again. Sorry, everybody. Okay, well, here's KN.
You're looking for AH?
Yeah, I don't know what.
Do you want me to try to share?
It's not up. Oh, sure, Dr. Miguel, if you can share it, that'd be great. It's Friday, y'all, technical issues. That's always that.
No, it's not letting me. It's just not letting me share anything.
You have to allow for sharing multiple users, Russi.
Do you guys want to just proceed with KN while we've got that up? And then we can figure out how to get AH on in a minute.
Everyone should be able to share. Try again, everybody start to be able to.
No, it's not, mine is not pulling up. The document is pulling up, but not when I try to share, it doesn't show anything.
Same here, I don't know what's going on.
Gremlins.
It's the same setting as any other meeting that I run, so I'm not sure why you're not able to do it.
Well, I think, okay, let's start with KN. I think you guys can see KN, right?
Yes.
Okay, let's start there.
Okay, so from the last meeting we had where we actually went over KN, what I did was I took the changes from that last meeting and I put those just in black print. And then the revisions that were made since that meeting, and they're now in red. And what I tried to do first was I tried to address, I think this was Ms. Clark's suggestion of having a provision at the beginning of KN. And Randy, if you want to scroll down to just where it shows that first block of red, maybe a little bit. This is designed or intended to cover any complaints that don't fall squarely within the harassment or the other specifically titled types of complaints at the bottom of the KN policy. And so what you have here, and it mirrors the language, but the, it's a little less formal than the formalized complaints for harassment or discrimination or retaliation. And then the next section I've got, if you scroll on down, and this was a suggestion, I think, of Dr. Nguyen, that we try to incorporate the bullying complaints and make them the same as the complaints that we would have for investigation purposes for discrimination, harassment, or retaliation. The additional policies that are referenced there in red are the bullying policies. And I've added the word bullying in here in a couple of different locations, including the definition of bullying.
Great.
Yep.
Greg, not to interrupt you, but I don't think what's on screen is reflective of what you're talking about.
I think we need to scroll down to make it, to show you where we're at.
I think Randy's froze.
Uh-oh. The screen frozen?
Yeah.
It looks like it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, can, is everybody able to pull it up in Board Docs to follow along?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So if everybody will pull it up in their Board Doc, so they've got it in front of them. And if anybody's having a problem with that, let me know.
My screen.
Yeah, your screen's up. Can you scroll? There we go. Okay. So the first part that I was talking about a minute ago that is designed to be the complaint process for just generic complaints that don't fit squarely under one of the headings that are below. So the headings below include things like complaints about discrimination, harassment, bullying, or retaliation, or there's another set of headings below that. This is the process that will govern that. And I think Ms. Clark had been the one to suggest we needed one like that. This mirrors that, still requires the complaints to be informally resolved at the lowest level if possible, but if there can't be a formal resolution, a formal complaint, it has to be completed with the investigation within 30 days and written determination unless otherwise provided by board policy. So that's kind of how that flows down in there. The second part is, and I think this was Dr. Nguyen's suggestion, if I remember correctly, that we make the bullying complaint process the same as the harassment, discrimination, retaliation process. So these other policies that you see added in red, they're referenced, those are the bullying policies. And then we've added the word bullying in here. And then if you scroll down a little bit farther, in the definition section, I've added the definition for bullying. This comes straight from the Kansas statute on bullying. So this is straight out of the statute, there's no change to the language on this. And there's also definition for cyberbullying, if you scroll onto the top of the next page. And that also comes directly from the statute. And so those complaints would be investigated in the same process, the same course as any type of discrimination, harassment, or retaliation complaint. I've still got the blank for the insert contact info and link, that's just something we'll insert after the policy is adopted to make sure it's current. You guys update that every year, and so it'll always be inserted to make sure it's the accurate active link. Complaint process adds the bullying stuff as well. And then I think that, oh, the only other change I made at the very bottom, if you scroll down, is I took out the section on complaints about personnel. And the reason I did that was the complaints about personnel, I didn't want there to be confusion. If there are complaints about personnel that relate to harassment, bullying, or retaliation or discrimination, those would fall into that section above. And then any other complaints about personnel, unless they fall under the collective bargaining agreement or the grievance process, which are separate, would fall under the general complaint process that's up above. And then I left the other subtopics in there, but I added sections specifically on training and public notification of the policy that, so that there was specific language in this policy that required there to be annual training on the complaint process policy to specifically include that in any training that's given on an annualized basis. So not only would the employees get training on the prohibitions of bullying, harassment, discrimination, retaliation, but they would get specific training on this policy KN, so they would know how to file complaints, if they had complaints, and also training on how to conduct those investigations, if they're one of the individuals that has to conduct an investigation. So those are the changes that I've made based upon the feedback from the last meeting. And so I'm opening up to questions, or if you guys have additional thoughts on changes, or if you're, if it's acceptable as to what we've got in there, then you can move forward and adopt it.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions from board members or clarification, any other thoughts?
Greg, were we going to train students?
Yes.
And is that stated in there?
Yes, so the district will provide annual training to employees and students.
Okay, got you, thanks.
Now, that's a great point. We want to make sure that the students are trained on this as well.
I had a question, this is one. And I understand we want to try to get things handled at the local level, but what if one doesn't trust the administration to investigate itself?
Well, the process, the process for investigation, let me see. Always provides for an investigation, in other words, to get bumped up a level. So if the complaint's about a principal, for example, then obviously the building principal can't investigate his or herself. So that would go to the district level. If the complaint is about administrative personnel at the district level, then that would be handled by the superintendent or superintendent's designee. If it's about the superintendent, it would be by either the board or somebody appointed by the board. If it's a complaint about a board member, it would be handled by an outside investigator.
Because I saw it in writing about the board or the superintendent, so I didn't feel that needed to be spelled out, if one didn't feel secure or feel that they were going to get a fair deal. I don't know, you know, you're saying it, but is it in writing?
Right. I'm looking right now.
I thought the part about the superintendent and the board, that someone else would handle that. But if I didn't feel, let's say Stacy was fair, and, you know, why is she investigating it? And I have the complaint against her?
So what I would suggest is that, because I thought I had that covered in here, but maybe it's, maybe it's further down only in the harassment and bullying section. So I would suggest in the, that I would add a sentence afterward, says at the lowest level, which is what the third sentence or second sentence of the, I do it after the fourth sentence of the second paragraph, and add a sentence that would say that whenever I'm writing, so I'm trying to click, make sure I got it right here. Trying to think of the best way to phrase it. I was trying, I started to write, whenever a complaint is made against a supervisor, that complaint will be investigated by a. Maybe like a higher, higher level, but maybe a. How about if I just say no one who, against whom a complaint is made, will be responsible for it, or allowed to investigate a complaint, complaint made against them, and that would be referred to a supervisory employee or something like that. I'm trying to think of the best way to phrase the language. I know what you're trying to get at, and I want to make sure it's covered correctly. What if we say that whenever a complaint is made.
Could you say something like, unless it presents a conflict in which, in which case it would be assigned to some, to another administrator?
Yeah. What if we took that last sentence in the first, in that second paragraph, where it says all other complaints will be investigated by the superintendent or his, her designee? I probably should make that, so it's not, I think we take a word his out and just say designee, I just say superintendent or designee, and. And in any instance where there's a conflict of interest, it will be assigned to an investigative officer or something like that. What do you think about that, Ms. Page?
Yeah, because I just didn't want anybody to say, you know, my complaint is against them, and they're going to turn around and investigate me. You do want to make it appear that it's not biased.
So I'm going to say on that last sentence, I'm going to add, and all other complaints will be investigated by the superintendent or designee. In any case where there is a conflict of interest, an investigating officer will be appointed. Does that sound good? That was a good suggestion. Any other things people caught?
Motion that we go ahead and accept the third re-proposed changes as modified by Greg today.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Not? Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
AC, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, board. Okay, so we will go to policy AH. And I'll see if I can, maybe Dr. Jaeger, you shared yours successfully, do you want to try that again?
On the screen.
Okay. So as a follow-up from our meeting again last Thursday on this, I've changed the policy from AC to AH. And then the other part that I modified based on suggestions to make it clear is in the training section, if you'd scroll down. I made it clear that training will be annual for the students as well as for the employees. And I made it very specific to say that the training will include how and where to report discrimination, harassment, or retaliation. And then in the public notice, I made it clear that the publication of notice would include not only a non-discrimination notice, but also policy AH and policy KN. So those are the changes that I made from the comments I received last time.
Any questions for Greg?
I don't know, I missed it, but did, we did say they need to be posted, right?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't think I saw it, but that's me. So I was asking for clarity.
It requires it to be posted, and I think Dr. Miguel was checking with the building to determine exactly where everything would be posted in each building. And I think that will be coming to as a report to the board at some point. I don't know if that's done yet, but I know that we were working with the buildings to make sure we knew where it was posted, so the board knew where it was posted in every building in the district.
Correct. And we confirmed that in schools, it's posted in the teacher's lounge and in the work areas, what we call the teacher workroom. And we are confirming with the rest of the district buildings. So we'll have something soon.
The rest of the buildings, meaning things like where the food service is and the shop, the facilities, administration office, North Central Office, those locations.
And the students find it, find it in those locations? No.
No, the students wouldn't have access to those locations. Now, you do require it to be in the student handbook, so it will be there and online, but I don't know that we have a place where it's posted for students to see it in the buildings, like a physical location.
Right, that's it. So we could request buildings to post it in the cafeteria, because we know all students go to the cafeteria, I'll make a note of that.
It's a good idea.
I make a motion that we accept the third re-proposed for policy AH.
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen, yes. Dr. Jaeger.
AC, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Greg, for getting us through those policies.
Yeah, thank you, board, for the work on that and then the help. There were great comments on this stuff, appreciate it.
Okay, so moving on in our agenda, we will go to item C, and we have informational items from our athletics director, so I believe Ms. Romstadt. Thank you for joining us today, glad to see you, and happy Friday.
Thank you very much. So the recommendation in regards to the KESHA proposal, it gives an opportunity for the fall teams, if conditions warrant, spring are in a better, safe, health environment for them to compete. You don't have to actually make a motion now, but we do need to make a decision relatively soon, so we know if we're going to use that option. I say that because teams that are competing now can play up to a certain point in their schedule, and then if they have to stop competing as a result of the COVID climate, if they didn't meet enough games, they could also choose then to go compete in the spring. So we really have some, some time before those dates are met, the end of September, first of October. But we will need to declare to KESHA that we are interested in competing in spring if the health conditions warrant us being able to. So that is the proposal. Now, a little piece of that proposal that's in addition to that is that if 50% of the 5A and 6A schools end up playing in the spring, then there's a schedule already created by KESHA, and it's by sport. So you don't, if a team, for example, say some schools around us are competing, and they're, they're getting through their soccer games and volleyball games, but they get held up with football games, they could choose the option, if they don't get far enough their seasons, to just compete in that one sport. So to determine the schedule in the spring, we have to wait and see how many teams are going to want to play in the spring. And so then they put the 5As and 6As together, and there has to be 50% plus one to determine. And if we do have that, then we would play the schedules that KESHA created. If, however, we would like to compete in spring, but there's not 50% of the 5As and 6As, then we would be able to create a schedule and play, maybe within our district in our own bubble, because obviously other schools would have played, or with some of the schools if we so choose that might be available. So the proposal is helping the schools like ourselves, maybe Turner, who are not competing in the fall, to have the opportunity. to have the opportunity for those kids in the spring. If a lot of schools end up getting into a category, then they have a schedule already created for us. I will make sure that I put that schedule into the Board Doc so you can look at it. I don't anticipate 50 to 60% getting into that group, but it could, and we don't know what's going to happen. So I can't give you exactly what our schedules would look like, because I don't know how many teams would be in it. I would like to consider us using spring for those kids to have an opportunity, if the health conditions warrant that, and you choose that, so that, and I would try to do it in a way where we don't interrupt much of the current spring teams, because obviously they were interrupted last year. So there are things like, we have coaches that coach multiple sports. We have kids that play multiple sports. And so we would take in consideration how we would do that. I know CASA has made the comment that when schools are in a situation where they've been not able to compete due to the community health conditions, it should be more of a focus to allow people to have some participation rather than trying to win state titles and that kind of thing. So I spoke with our athletic directors who reached out to their coaches, so especially those spring coaches that weigh in, and give some feedback to that, because they will be affected. And I would say all of them are a little concerned because they have coaches that share sport and kids that share sport. But I think all of them didn't want to see anybody face what they themselves faced in the spring, which was absolutely no competition. So I would say, obviously, we'll have more work to do, but there's not a lot we can do until we find out when the fall season completes and we know exactly who's in that bubble for the schedules in the spring. So the proposal just opens the door for us. It's not a commitment that we are going to do it. I understand completely that it'll be based upon our community's health conditions at the time. So that's what that recommendation is, that we consider doing that. Does anybody have questions in regards to that?
I do. Thank you, Sammy. This is Dr. Stacy Yeager. I have a question. So are you changing the proposals that you presented to us on Tuesday? Or are you still wanting us to look at those proposals?
Sure, I'm, yeah. I think what I'm saying is, I mean, if you guys are comfortable with making that decision today, that's fine. The sooner that I can plan, the better. But you, as a Board, do know that that's a recommendation, that you're going to have to, at some point, let me know how we reply to CASA. We have up until, like I said, those first of October dates to make that reply, but the planning, you know, starts as soon as we know what we're doing.
So to clarify, you're talking about accepting the CASA proposal to participate in fall sports in the spring. That's the decision that you're asking for us to make. Is that correct?
Right, that is correct. I'm recommending that would be the thing. We should provide that opportunity. And again, we won't know till we get into spring and know those health conditions and those standards if we can. It doesn't commit us to anything other than letting them know that we are going to. It gives our kids and our teams an opportunity to say, well, if the health conditions weren't better in the spring, we're going to find a way to allow them to compete. It's kind of a message of hope in some ways. It will be shortened schedule for the fall sports. It will not be a complete full-out schedule. It will be a shortened one, where maybe football jumps in a little bit early as soon as. We want to start it after another sport's finished, so that we can, instead of having a 10, 11-game schedule, we're looking at five-game schedules. Or possibly, everybody plays everybody, and then one and four play, two and three play, and then you have a, maybe what we call a district KPS winner. It would be something like that, where you're looking at the five to six games rather than 11 or 12, which would be really hard on the spring sports to elongate the season that long.
All right, well, I do want, I want to make a motion that we accept the CASA proposal to participate in fall sports in the spring.
I second it. Is this the part for discussion?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So while the spring is not, them playing in the spring is not necessarily my concern. I am more concerned about, a lot of the conversations we've been hearing is our kids want scholarship opportunities, and so I'm concerned about us waiting until spring for scholarship opportunities. And I want them to be able to play, but I'm more concerned at this point too about how do we get their abilities displayed so that we're not holding them up? I don't want to be, I don't want to be a hindrance to any student. I don't care if it's one student getting what they need when it comes to being able to get scholarship opportunities. So how do we, and of course, you know, it's no rocket science that people are constantly coming at us and talking to us in the community, and some ideas have been provided to me. But what ideas have been provided to you, or thoughts on how do we display our students in the fall season, so that they have opportunities to be able to show footage to their colleges, and without waiting to spring and saying, "Spring may or may not happen."
Right. That's a great question, and it's a very important question on a lot of coaches, as well as students' mind. Let me give you kind of just a little example. If you're a Division I athlete, those kids like to compete in the fall. If they are possible, graduate early and move on into that Division I and train in the spring. Those kinds of kids, you know who they are, their sophomore year, junior year. The Division II college athlete, and we have the level of college athlete, those coaches already know about them, but you're right, if they're not competing right now, there's not current film to use. So they're going to use old huddle film. But there is something else we can do to help them that does not involve playing and competing. And that is to create, at their school, in their spot, you create kind of a combine. It's athletics. Coaches want to know times on things, your pure athletic strengths, jumps, verticals, speed pieces, agility pieces. And they like to compare it to other kids, and that's why they have these combines in the summer, so kids can showcase their talents in front of everybody. So we have talked about, and I've talked with many different people, how we would create that virtually, where the student is not, we don't have people coming in. We have our students in small group, like they should be, doing the mitigations that they need, but being able for them to showcase some pure talent. Because that is something that's important to those coaches, to keep thinking about them and keep them on that list, so they don't pass it by and go after somebody else. That's the best we could do. But we can create that. And junior college, a lot of our kids that have opportunities with junior college, remember that junior college this year is not playing in the fall. They pushed their football to spring. So they're actually going to be playing in the spring. And so our kids have an opportunity to still be seen playing later and seen by those schools, to get those opportunities to go in and play. And I know we've had several of our athletes, you know, the community colleges, junior colleges are looking at. As well as, I know, we have a lot of NAI kids, we have our colleges, they're looking at our kids. And so they'll use last year's film. We can create a virtual way to showcase some of their talent that meets the mitigation piece. So we're not doing anything that we shouldn't in that line. And we'll create a virtual, we can put their huddle clips, top picks, the virtual, whatever we do. We might even have kids done individually, but maybe we can compare, maybe they can be a comparison virtually, you know, where they're, so colleges can see the talent levels we have in our different programs at different positions. It will all be done individually.
So I'm speaking a little bit outside of my language, so you'll have to apologize. I mean, I apologize ahead of time if I'm not using the politically correct terms when it comes to sports. And I can only speak for myself. I do want, my personal preference is for us to be able to display our children in the fall. And so I hear what others are doing, but I also think about things in a more innovative way. And so when you said, I think, the combine, and how do we display our students, and I would definitely rely on, this is my voice only, yours and other coaches, on what that should look like, and how do we interact with colleges and make sure that our students are getting that opportunity. I just don't want it on my head that any student missed an opportunity, whether they got it or not, missed an opportunity to go to whatever college or even have the opportunity to be considered.
Well, I could say that if they're not competing, it is harder, because they're competing against other kids around that are playing. So they won't have current film. But there's other things we can do, and I think we can engage college coaches and let them know, we have some very talented kids here. This is the best way we could showcase them right now, and we don't want them forgotten. And so that's what we would create. I've talked to two or three different people within the district that have done this in other places. I don't have a word for it, because we've never had one. I'm not even sure, I say combine, because that's a word used really in the summers for kids to go to, and they do a lot of that with other kids, and they showcase and compare. So coaches will look at them and say, "Oh, that kid can do that. I want to watch it," you know, in the season. So it's not the same, but it's the idea that we can showcase some talent. But can we really put top people side by side and compete them? No, we're not going to do that. So we're going to get creative. But without, with the absence of games and not having game film, where they, coaches can watch them and compare them to other kids they're looking at, the best we can do is still engage those coaches, try to create a virtual piece for them, so that our kids aren't forgotten. And then if there's a spring and scholarships are available still, we can get them to showcase their talent at that time. And that, again, is if the health conditions are warranting that. Whether it be fall, winter, or spring sports, it's the same for all of them.
Which, that's why it makes me nervous, just to wait until spring. And so that's the reason I asked the question of how do we showcase our kids in the fall and get them what they need.
So Ms. Romstadt, this is Dr. Nguyen. So, and I don't know if you mentioned anything earlier. So the one sheet that you provided on Tuesday, so this is item number three?
This was item number three, yes.
Okay, so help me find in the other pieces that you responded, CASA's proposal. All I heard were you verbalized. Did you present it to us in written form?
I don't think I have. I can put that in a Board Doc for you, so you can see that proposal.
Well, I'm looking for more structure of a proposal than a one sentence. And so I would think that even your comments to Ms. Clark, if you're thinking of a combine, would this be part of this proposal?
The combine can be done within the workout timeframe.
I understand that, but would that be, I mean, we would, we, well, put it like this. You're saying judging by the local health conditions? We haven't defined what local health conditions, because I'm still reflecting back that you all allowed something. Was it conditioning this summer? Just conditioning?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so with positivity raised to 29%, you all allowed that. Now, I don't know what local conditions, what your definition of local conditions and what medical, I'll say KDHE, safe local condition. So I'm concerned that this one sentence, with the bullet point, modified schedule, no state playoffs, as well as the benefit, as far as I'm concerned, is not substantial enough to understand exactly, I mean, you have in parentheses, if health conditions allow, but I believe that with due respect, it should have, if this is a proposal based on CASA's proposals, well, where are CASA's proposals, so that we can make reference to how you're going to satisfy those? So I don't believe that this is adequate at this time.
Are there any other questions or thoughts?
Well, I just, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. I just wanted to say, I'm not trying to stop anybody from getting their scholarship. I would like for the kids to be safe, and I want their coaches to be safe. The gentleman just died yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, in Olathe. So we want everybody to be safe. We're not trying to stop anybody from reaching their dreams or their goals. The ultimate thing is we want everyone to be safe. If they can do the combine, if we can get more details, they may not be able to actually play, but if the combine can show their skills with more details and information, great, we got to, this year is going to be something, it's something we've all never experienced. So we're going to all have to make adjustments. And I believe everybody here wants the best for our children. But what I want ultimately is not only for the kids, the coaches, for everybody to be alive. You know, that's the bottom line. Now, we can expose them, throw them out there, and then they get sick and they die. Then who's to blame for that? And that burden falls on us. So that's what I'm concerned about. I want them to be safe. I want them to have the opportunity, but it may not be a plain opportunity, not right now. So if the combine is a way to do it, and like I said, with more detail, then let's make it work. Let's showcase them. Because if you're good, they already know who you are. If you're good, they know who you are. Now, the rest of us, I played, I wasn't, I didn't get a full scholarship on that. So I got a chance to play, but at the same time, the people who were good, they know who they are. They can, whatever little small school, whatever, wherever you're at, they know who you are. And then the rest of us are trying to pick up whatever we can. So again, if we can do it without them hurting themselves or hurting anybody else, let's make it work. Let's use that creativity. If we can do the combine, what does it entail? Can we get more information? Let's make it work. I don't have a problem with that.
Ms. Romstadt?
I just want people to know, we want them to be safe and alive. We want their families to be safe. Let's not lose sight of that. And I'm sorry, Ms. Romstadt.
Ms. Romstadt, this is Janie Humphries. Thank you for the sample daily workout. It gives me a better idea of what you're organizing. So are you saying that part of this daily workout could be where the coaches are filming the students to do part of this combine or showcasing the students, so they can share that with the college coaches?
Yes. Now, I have not had long discussions with the district, because I didn't want to get people talking about this when I didn't know what we would be doing. But I have had some conversations, so that I could figure out and think out of the box how we can help our students. You're right, the workout opportunity provides us to, and I don't know if the combine's the right word, because it's never been done before, but it's the best word I've got for now, but create something that we could film to showcase time, strengths, factors, you know, things that would be, that are important to coaches at the next level, but would not break any of the order that was given to us in regards to what sport, you know, what you could do with teams. So it would be very, you know, and that's why we need to sit down. And honestly, I need to move on that, because it's going to take us a week or two to put something right together. And then now we're already into, you know, into September, and college coaches are, they're worse at being now mode than we are, so they're going to want that information. But yes, that's something we can do within the workout setting.
So, and then even after the workout time passes, the coaches can still be working, actively working with, approaching the college coaches and stuff about how good our kids are and doing that, connecting that relationship, building on into the winter sports season and stuff. It's not just a one, a one-four-week time period that they can work on them with that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And usually, this is the time of year where we're showcasing juniors to colleges, so they can watch them in the junior season, follow them in the spring and summer and whatever they compete in, so they know who to get on their list for their senior year. So we not only have to pick up speed now, figure out our seniors, we've got to not get, let our juniors get behind the ball. So this ability to be able to tape and create a virtual test of their strength, used to be for seniors and then our juniors, so that that can be used. So that that can be used because they don't have fall competitive tape to use.
Oh, so, so the spring might be more showcasing our juniors than actually showcasing the seniors?
It depends. The seniors would be able to compete, but some of those colleges are in, far into that, past that decision-making process, whatever. And so we need to engage it now and help the kids. But we know that in the spring, I wouldn't, it, the scholarships are being given out, you know, during the year at a certain point based on rules. So sometimes spring is the end of those rules. Now, I will say one other thing that is confusing, and that is, you know, the NCAA has allowed all these kids to stay for more eligibility since they lost their season, but they did not give them more scholarships to give out. And they're only can get out so many. So if you're keeping all your seniors another year and your juniors and your sophomores and last year's freshmen, what's available for the incoming high school kids that need scholarships? So now it's even more competitive as a senior. Cause they might have someone that decided to graduate and move on, or someone now that's fighting an injury and decided not to play and they're going to school and maybe get a ruling to free up that scholarship. But it's, it's a, it's a hard time for any athlete and any kid that's graduating, whether it's from college to find a job or a senior high school athlete that wants to compete. Because the field just got tighter. It's very, very small, very, very tight. So anything we can do to help our kids is, is what I'm suggesting that in our workout times, we might be able to do.
Okay, and so if we vote yes to, to say that we want to do the spring, the fall sports in the spring, the, the fact is that if, if the UG says no, no sports in the spring, we, we, we can't have them. But, but we're telling Kasia that health, health, uh, conditions allowing, we would like to do that. And that's, that's all, that's all we're saying tonight if we vote yes.
Right, I, I use the word health condition because I know as a board, as well as I support you, I'm very concerned about everybody. I have an 83-year-old mother living with me now. So my children, who actually live around me, don't even see me much because, you know, we've, we've got mom there. So we have to be careful. And they were all athletes and I know how they would have felt in the same scenario. But I know you made a, a very strong decision. And I think it's based upon the health, you know, of our community and, and the risks. So I use that word, meaning when we go into spring, we'll still be waiting to see where we're at. But at least it opens the door for kids now to go, hey, my senior's not over, you know? I get a chance to play, my parents see me play again if we can.
Like I said, thank you very much for the sample workout and for the, all the questions that you answered. I appreciated that and explained a lot more. It relieved my mind to know what steps are being taken. It doesn't totally erase all my concerns, as you know, but at least I know what steps are being taken. And, 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 uh, that everyone has, has been reading up on everything and that you are going to have an updated meeting with all the coaches and stuff and that we're not going just on things that happened in June. So thank you very much.
I, I wanted to let you know that, uh, Dr. Miguel had suggested and Dr. Pitts has set up a meeting today with principals just to quickly catch up because this thing is.
It changes.
Moving quick and, and got their input as well. And I think logistically, we have a lot of things we want to take care of. And as I said, no matter what date, and I think what we're looking at is pushing the date back a week to give us more time. But even then, you go when everything's ready to go, having the meetings, having things aligned. I will tell you one thing about practices. Not all teams are going to be at workouts. Just the fall in the September, October range. And that way soccer kids can condition in the soccer area, football would be in a different area, volleyball will be in their area, cross country, of course, they're pretty standard. Uh, we would not mix other sports into that. That, that's, and, and they have rules. Winter sports can't do anything like that right now. They can only about a month before have a conditioning workout. So we're, we're separating everybody, we're bubbling and we're keeping them in small, big, no groups over 45 in a, in a given area. And every group will be broken into 10s or 15s, small groups, when they work out, so they're not intermixing. Um, the only time they would mix is on the bus coming and on their bus if they go home. Or if they drive on their own, sometimes they ride together. Um, and we, this summer, talked a lot to them about, we'll put you in the same group if you're riding together. So, you know, you're not mixing them any more than necessary. And I tell you, our coaches worked very hard at that, of planning that before that first practice.
But you, you answered the questions very well. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Romstadt, this is Dr. Nguyen again. Help me understand, because you did not write a detailed, um, explanation for item three. And you've had, we've had conversation and, and with respect, it, you know, you haven't committed to, as you said, a combine, but it sounded like a good idea as we talked through it. What is, what does item three mean? And so now that, for my purposes, structurally, what does it mean?
Item, item three means only that I'm recommending that we, um, approve the Kasia's spring proposal for fall sports, we cannot compete now.
And that means what? What are the components of Kasia's spring, since you did not present it to us in writing?
The proposal is a statement, basically, a very simple statement. And I will get it to you and I understand that, I will make sure that's in your hands, but for today. Because you're asking me and I know there's a possible consideration.
Isn't that the, that this proposal is based upon? I mean, you're saying, based upon this proposal, am I, please correct me if I'm incorrect.
I'm sorry, I didn't answer, I didn't understand your question. What do you?
You're saying you'll get it to us, but isn't the statement the basis of your proposal?
The statement from Kasia is that they, they approved by vote throughout the state that if a school cannot come finish their schedule by a certain date, or if a school cannot start their fall sports, they can play in the spring, a limited schedule. That, that's the proposal. And so, uh, and that's really about all it says in that, is that this, that we asked the members of the entire state to vote, and they all voted to give kids the opportunity that couldn't in the fall to play in the spring. That's all that proposal is.
Now, based on that, what are you proposing?
I recommended that we accept that opportunity from Kasia to play in the spring if conditions allow us to.
That's all your proposal is asking?
That's all I'm, that's all I'm, that's all I'm asking.
But there's no other conditions to playing? We're just going by the standard rules we have now, I guess?
The only changes in the spring will be depending on how many teams need to play. If 50% of the 5A and 6A schools, I think that's, I don't have the number.
But that's whether, how many games are played? You're asking if our team can play. And those teams are what?
Are fall sports that would play in spring?
Correct.
Would be football, boys soccer, volleyball, cross country, and we have one school that has girls tennis.
Okay, so, and before spring, what are you say, what, what does that, um, agreement entail? What are we committing ourselves to if we accept it?
Right, you would, if you accept it, you're letting Kasia know that you, you want to compete in the spring, to have the opportunity to compete in the spring. But you can at any point decide what that is. Unless 50% of our 5 and 6As combined end up canceling the, the season and they want to all play in the spring, then we would still choose if we were going to do it. But then they would, Kasia would control the schedule rather than us.
Okay, schedule is one thing. What does it mean for our students' participation? What are you suggesting that when we accept that proposal, we also accept A, B, C, D, and E? What does A, B, C, D, and E entail?
A, B, C, and G will be defined when we know how many teams other than us. You, we could say that we're only going to play ourselves.
So we're not, we're not accepting any practice schedules? We're not accepting any conditioning? We're just expecting they will play a game come spring if, as you say, 50% agree to a schedule?
Well, 50%, yeah, 50% is the schedule Kasia created. If you vote yes to this now, you're just opening the door for them to compete in the spring. And we will determine what that looks like.
Okay, so we're not agreeing to any combine? We're not agreeing to any conditioning? We're not agreeing to anything other than a schedule in the spring?
Right.
I think, um, yeah, I, I think what it sounds like, and I'll just jump in real quick and Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong. So the motion that's on the floor, based on the recommendation, is to accept Kasia's, uh, proposal for us to have games in the spring. That doesn't guarantee, because it's still based on conditions and, and, and whatnot, that we would have to decide closer to that time. But it's, it's really just giving us the opportunity and giving our teams the opportunity to potentially compete and play games in the spring with no real guarantee yet, um, of that. But it's, 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 um, in essence, it also buys us a little bit, a little bit of time, um, to, to kind of maybe lay out some of those criteria that, that, that you're asking for, Dr. Nguyen, um, to help us figure out what are some of those parameters, what does practice and all of that look like? Uh, but I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Yeager, is your motion too? And Tammy was, Romstadt, your recommendation is just to accept the proposal to, um, have those games played in the spring rather than now in the fall?
That is correct.
Tied to it, it's just Kasia's proposal to, to move games to the, or fall sports to the spring?
That is correct. All schools have to commit to either playing in the fall, or if their schedules get canceled, they still have an option by a certain date to say, we're going to finish or compete in the spring. And so we also have that option, even though we're not competing, we have that same option to say, we would like the opportunity to be considered, to, to have the opportunity to compete in spring. When we get closer to that, we'll probably be able to define what that's going to look like.
Right, okay, thank you. Um, I think we've had really good discussion. I'd agree that, that, you know, we appreciate the, the conversation from all board members. And this is an ongoing conversation. Um, and, and I'm sure Ms. Romstadt and her team and, and, uh, the, the coaches will, and Dr. Miguel will keep us posted as to what's happening. So we appreciate, appreciate the work going into it. Um, at this time, I would ask Ms. Smith to call the vote. It's been moved and seconded with great conversation.
I do, I do have a question. So we are, I understand what we're voting on, um, and I don't have a problem voting. My question still lies though on, and maybe this is a separate conversation, what else can we do for our students? Cause that, that to me is still, is still outstanding. What else can we do for our students during the fall? And that's where the separate conversation came in. And maybe that, I don't know if that clears up any confusion. So where does that part of the conversation fit in? Cause no, that was not part of what was presented to us, no. But that is a concern that I have, um, and maybe it's just me.
I think that would come up after we vote, wouldn't it?
Yeah, maybe that, I will take that separately, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, that's, that's what I needed to know.
Okay. Ms. Smith, go right ahead with the roll call vote, please.
So, hold on, just so we're clear, can you repeat the motion?
Uh, to accept the Kasia proposal to participate in fall sports in the spring. This is number three on the proposal from Tuesday's, um, align item for sports on the board docs.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Uh, Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Yeager?
Casey, yes.
Thank you so much.
Randy, if I could?
Everybody.
Randy, if I could, could we go ahead and discuss number two of the proposal? And then Yolanda, Yolanda's last, sorry, Yolanda.
I don't care about being last as long as I'm there.
That's fine. So just as a reminder to folks, number two, if you go back to Tuesday's agenda, that's, that's what we're referring to. Uh, number two is looking at the, uh, utilizing the KSDE gating criteria to create transparency with parents and students in our community. So if you remember, uh, Ms. Romstadt provided that gating criteria to us on Tuesday. Um, so I think that we wanted to get an update. Go ahead, Dr. Yeager, I'm sorry.
I want to make a motion that we accept that number two, utilize the KSDE gating criteria to create transparency with parents, students in our community.
I second it.
Moving seconded, I would entertain discussion or questions, Dr. Nguyen?
I, I, I have a problem with, there's more to that when it says that this, but it also said that the nurse, the athletic director, I, I don't have it up on the screen. And it was someone else would make the decision. And I don't, I, I can see the gating part, but I don't like the part where they make the decision. I think that decision comes to us. They can recommend whatever they'd like to recommend, provide whatever data. And since the board is going to be held responsible for it, that should be a board decision. They can make recommendations, but I have a problem with part of that. Not the whole thing, but part of it. Cause when they said they participated this summer at 29%, that frightens me. So I, I, again, no disrespect, but I don't think that they can make a recommendation. But the way that was written, that they would decide, I have an issue with that.
Um, this is Dr. Nguyen and I likewise. And so I would, I would make a, I would suggest making a substitute motion to approve the first three bullet points and not approve, and I'll read it, I'm looking at it. Designate a COVID response team to evaluate the criteria. Chief of Staff, Medical Specialist, District Nurse, and Athletic Director. Decision made on Friday for next week based on previous two weeks. Again, uh, this group of four, however many people carry no liability. The board, the, the district has liability. So I do believe, um, if, if the maker of the motion, um, would consider amending the motion to include the first three bullet points, which say utilizing the gating criteria, using Wanda County data to support the criteria, which once again, I don't understand, well, I put it like this. If you're using the gating criteria, it says no more than 15%. So if I understand no more than 15%, then, then there would not be workouts. It says, because of the, well, now that goes, what is the, is it, is it allowing workouts? I guess you need clarification too. What, what does number two mean? Cause the benefit of allowing workouts goes with number one.
Elizabeth, would you like to answer that, please?
Yes, good afternoon. Um, so I wanted to just jump in, um, to kind of comment on the, um, the usage of the data for the criteria. Um, I wanted to let you know, I know there was some question on our Tuesday meeting about which criteria, which website we're going to, to use, to find our criteria. And so, um, because, um, KSDE, um, and KDHE work together to develop these, um, this Kansas Schools gating criteria, they have all this information available on their website. And so I was able to access that today, um, to kind of see where we would fall today if we were to use this type of a criteria. Um, and so if you, if you would allow me to present that, um, data, I can give you a better picture of where we would fall right now. Um, so based on, based on our data today, if we were to follow this criteria, the county is at, um, 15% for the two-week county percent positivity rate. That's a, um, based on the dates of August 28th through September 10th. Although the daily positive rate, which you can see, um, is around 17.9%, the two-week average currently is at 15%. So we would definitely be in the red on that zone. Um, as far as the two-week cumulative county incidence rate, that, um, we would be, we're actually at 228 cases per 100,000, so we would still be in the red zone. Um, I will point out that we are actually in the trend in county incident rate. We are decreasing for the last three weeks. And those are all things that you can see on the KDHE. Um, those are all things that you can see on the KDHE website. Based on their recommendation, um, and they have a, a video tutorial that explains where to go to find this data and how to use the data to make the decisions. Their recommendation is that you would make your decision based on the highest risk zone that you remain in. So based on today, yes, we have one category that is in green, but we have two categories in red, and so we would remain in red. And based on that, this modified Kansas School gating criteria that we presented to you, we would still only be allowed to do conditioning weights or skill development. Um, I also wanted to kind of speak to the concerns about us being at twenty-nine percent at one point over the summer. I will say that was a, a single-day positivity rate, and that wasn't the whole, um, uh, average of the positivity at that time, but that was a, a peak at that time. Um, but the reason that I feel that we were able to be so successful with our mitigation is because we followed the, um, Wyandotte County Health Department local health orders and all the recommendations. So they provided us with recommendations on June eighteenth, June twenty-second, and, um, August thirteenth, uh, that was after our summer workouts had concluded. But all of those, um, state that practices and conditioning activities, um, may proceed in the event that six feet social distancing can always be continuously maintained between individuals. And so we know that the, the pillars of infection control, um, refer to staying home when you're sick, wearing a mask that covers your nose and your mouth at all times, and maintaining six feet distance. And so the rate of transmission in individuals that are able to maintain those three things is very low, and that's why I feel like we were able to be successful, because we followed, um, very closely what the health directors of, uh, the unified government had asked of us.
Ma'am, did anyone get tested? Because you can be asymptomatic and not show any symptoms. So again, eh, I don't know about that. That's just me, my opinion. I respect yours, but I'm just saying that, because I just wanted to know, did anybody get tested?
To my knowledge, and Tammy might be able to speak to this as well, I don't believe we had anyone who, um, reported to us that they had to be tested. We had, and again, we had a daily screening criteria that all athletes and coaches had to complete. One of the questions on there is around anyone who, um, may have been exposed to, um, COVID-19. So we had very specific criteria to try to make sure that if you were a contact of a contact, we, we were really discouraging them from being there. I know that we had at least one, um, student who worked at a, at a long-term care facility over the summer, and she reached out to her coaches, who reached out to Tammy and I, um, because she worked in a facility like that, and because they had patients, um, in the hospital that had been, um, had tested positive for COVID-19, she made that decision that she would not come to practice. It wasn't even something that we, um, required of her. She just knew that, um, you know, in the, in the spirit of being, keeping everyone and her teammates safe, that it was best for her not to attend workouts.
And Wanda, for reference, when you asked about the COVID response team, it was mentioned to have the Chief of Staff, Medical Specialist, District Nurse, and Athletic Director a part of that team to make that decision.
I know that, but I'm saying, because we deal with the liability, I'm, because I'd like to reach out to even more than what they just said there and get more clues. But I, that's my issue with the team.
Yeah, was that you trying to say?
Yeah, Dr. Miguel, go ahead.
Well, I, I was just wondering, um, may you suggest, uh, somebody else to add? Because I'm thinking if we, uh, if the idea is every Friday to evaluate the data for the last two weeks to make decisions for the following week, it would not, um, it would not be possible to bring it to a board meeting, because we only have meetings every two weeks. So may I suggest that maybe if a board member wants to join this team, and we would have representation, um, to assist this team in making the decision?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, if, if, um, we, regarding the, the timing, you know, if we're going to have to make suggestions for the next week, either we'd have to have a special meeting every Friday.
Right.
Um, or, um, or figure something else out, um, maybe having one or two board members participate. Um, I think it could be a good suggestion. I don't know, maybe, you know, having, you know, and our superintendent has a ton of other things going on, um, but, you know, when possible, if she could also be a part of that. I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm open to suggestions as well. I totally understand, um, you know, maybe expanding that group a little bit to help provide some recommendations.
Right, but I, I do not want to amend my motion. I think it's fine as it is. I think if there's added people that the superintendent may want to recommend and direct to be on there, I'm fine with her direction or, um, a board member, but I don't think it has to be part of the motion.
Mr. Lopez, if I, if I may speak, Board President Lopez, what we did is we modeled the group after Blue Valley, Shawnee Mission, and a number of our other neighboring districts. And there also was the talk of bringing another health consultant on that is already doing work with the district, so it wouldn't be having to pay someone, it would be someone who's already doing work with us. Um, it wasn't necessarily capped at that group, that was just a starting group to kind of look at that. So there's no opposition on this end. Uh, in fact, we'd love more collaboration, and if others were involved, I think that would help with that process. But this is a process many other districts are using. Uh, we came with the grading, grading, gating criteria, because, um, it is something that's being used in a number of districts, and I do think it also assists us as we look at, um, and I'll be back in front of you the twenty-second, as we talk about potentially returning to school. It also gives us some data that we can look at as far as, is it safe for students to come back face to face? Because part of that gating criteria also has percentages about, um, hybrid models and things of that nature that we could also utilize. So I think it's a great tool for all of us in the district, and can really help us make some, uh, I hate to use educational jargon, but some data, data, database decisions, um, as we're looking at that. So that's kind of where that concept came from, just, uh, you know, to give some background. And we would definitely be open, uh, Board President Lopez, to other members if the board would so desire that, that a committee be, be in place.
Thank you, Mr. Lankis. Any, any other questions or thoughts, um, before we entertain a question? Janie, you look like you have a question.
Um, Greg, wasn't there a lawsuit or something in one of our Johnson County's districts about the board not making the decision, but an outside committee making the decision?
I could remember how to unmute my microphone, I'd be better off. Um, there have been a couple of lawsuits, um, based on some different things, but, but part of the lawsuit, the lawsuits that have been filed have been lawsuits filed to open up and require the, um, districts to offer sports in the fall. And part of the, um, the lawsuit that was made was whether, or the argument that was made in the lawsuit, and one of the lawsuits at least, is whether, uh, and this relates to, I think, the Blue Valley, and it wasn't an actual lawsuit that was filed, it was a complaint that was made as to whether it violated the, uh, COMA, the Open Meetings Act, because the committee that was created was not convened as an open meeting, it wasn't open.
Okay.
So as long as, as long as your committee's open to the public, it's, it's not an issue. Um, it, and, and COMA only applies if it's a board committee. So if you add a board member to the committee, then it becomes a board committee, and then it would be open to the public. If it's an administrative committee, it's no different than, um, you know, the superintendent meeting with the principals, that's not necessarily an open meeting. But that becomes the issue, because if it starts becoming the decision-making body, then it potentially becomes an open meeting, which is subject to the same rules for COMAs as a board meeting.
Okay, I thought there was some complaint about, uh, a committee making the decision and not the board, but...
The, the, the argument was, is that the committee made the decision, but they did so in private.
Private, okay.
And that violated COMA, that was the argument that was made.
Okay, I can't remember the whole article.
Greg, clarify, even if it's just one or two board members?
If it's a committee of, if, if it's a committee of the board, um, there's an opinion out there that says that that is still subject to COMA. And so if it's a board committee as opposed to an administrative committee, that's the distinction. Um, so if you add a board member to it, in my opinion, it becomes a board committee, um, so it'd be open to COMA. And then that doesn't mean that the whole board has to convene, that just means you have to put notice out, and the meeting has to be, uh, open to the public.
In terms of liability, if someone, let's say, heaven forbid, someone dies, based on recommendation from this committee, so who's liable for that?
Well, hopefully, nobody would be liable for it. Um, you know, I can't prevent somebody from bringing a claim.
Mm-hmm.
Liability for contracting a virus typically doesn't flow to entities or institutions. Now, if you did something that was intentional, so for example, if, say, say I'm the, say I'm the coach, right, and I get COVID, and I know I've got COVID, I test positive, and notwithstanding the fact that I've got COVID, I show up to a practice and get my kids sick, and one of them dies from that. Well, I intentionally did that. I knew I had COVID, I intentionally endangered them, there's potential for liability there. And, and because that person was acting in employment for the school district, there's potential liability for the school district. But if the school district has in place protocols and rules that are followed and strictly enforced, that are supported by, uh, reasonable health officials, um, there's some discretion there, and the district should be insulated from liability based upon the Torque Claims Act, which does give discretion to the school district, there shouldn't be the ability to per, to pursue a claim in that, that fashion. You know, it's, it's still a risk, anybody can bring a suit at any time, but all we can do in these kinds of situations, no more than if a kid playing football who had a concussion, and we didn't know he had a concussion, gets hurt or killed during a game, um, there still could be a claim of liability brought. It's really no different than any other situation. So there's always some degree of risk, uh, there's always some degree of protection from that risk, because everybody is responsible for their own decisions in some respects. So all you can do is act upon the best advice you have from the medical professionals and other experts involved, and, and try to follow that to protect yourself.
Okay, so if I understand you right, if we said that we wanted our board president on this committee, because he has a, he's a former nurse, and he understands medical jargon, then we would have to notice that the committee was meeting, it would have to be an open meeting?
Correct. Yes.
Didn't you just say, it doesn't matter if a board member's on it or not? If it's some kind of decision, it still has to be public?
No, I mean, I, I, you, you make, you have administrators make decisions all the time. Essentially, if there's a committee and it's committee of administrators that are employees of the district making that decision, um, it's no different than delegating that decision to the superintendent or some other administrators in charge of the day-to-day operations of the district. But if you change that to where that is a decision, that is, um, that, or that it involves a, a, a board, or, or board members, then it becomes a committee of, of the board, even if it's only one board member and three administrators, or a member of the public, or some other outside official, and then it becomes a, an open meeting.
Thank you, Greg. Um, appreciate the conversation, everybody. There's a motion and seconded on the table. Uh, Ms. Smith, if you would go ahead and call, roll call vote, um, please.
All right, thank you. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Dr. Nguyen?
Um, and I'll give my explanation of vote first, that I, I'm, I'm concerned that the responsibility is not in the right hands, and the board should not be delegating, giving away its authority, so I vote no.
Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the thoughtful conversation, everybody. Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we have at least one board representative on this committee, and that the board be notified immediately, uh, following the, the meeting of the, uh, action that's being recommended by the committee.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Humphries. Some motion on the floor?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Questions or conversation?
Yeah, Wanda Brownlee Page, would the board not have the final say? They recommend, but don't we approve?
I think that goes back, uh, good question, Ms. Page, I appreciate that. I think it, it goes back to the, the point that Dr. Miguel made in terms of the frequency of board meetings, um, since we meet every other week, and if this, this committee needs to make a recommendation every Friday, um, we don't meet frequently enough, or on Fridays, to, to approve or not the decision for the recommendation. So, um, that's, that's where there's a little bit of a rub between the committee and, and the board making a decision, uh, so that, to answer your question.
I, I would say I am not in favor of this, just because it bogs down the process. We have our Chief of Staff who makes decisions every single day as it relates to liabilities for our students, and this is a decision that I do not feel that board members should have to be a part of. We can know what's going on, we can ask for an update on Tuesdays when we meet, but this is where we come back to trusting our staff to be able to follow the guidelines we just passed, to make sure they are following the rules and policies we put in place. I don't think we need to, um, again, require for a board m- member to be present. I don't think we need to, we've already said via Randy, we're, you know, suggesting maybe our superintendent be part of those meetings to give us feedback, but I do not think we should require and put it into, um, practice to bog down this process.
And I would say, I agree with, uh, Dr. Jaeger, but before we even decide as to whether or not we're going to accept that, which one of the board members would be willing to be a part of that?
I, and I have to say, I don't see where it would bog down the process. I'm just saying that a board member should be on the committee, and that after the decision is made, the board should be notified what it's going to be.
So who's going to be on the committee? Which board member will volunteer to be a part of that? If we're going to vote for it, we need to know who's going to be a part of it, who would like to be a part of it. You suggested, would you like to be a part of that committee?
I was going to suggest the president, since he's a medical professional, but if no one else wants to do it, I would, I would be there, I would volunteer. But I think it's, it was, it's common sense that the board should know after the committee decides what the decision is.
I agree with Dr. Jaeger in that professional trust in knowing that you have a Chief of Staff in place, they will present the information to us as a board, and we can make our decisions from there. But to be in constant meeting every Friday with them, I, I just don't think that is effective.
I think it's effective. This is Wanda Brownlee Page, because we're dealing with people's lives, and we get accused of everything else, and we need to be there, we need to know what's going on. I'd be willing to help, too. I know Janie says she would, I would, if Randy couldn't make it, but one of us needs to be there.
And I would, uh, support the motion, because likewise, the responsibility, Chief of Staff, nurse, whatever, athletic director, medical specialist, um, not, the manner in which, you know, using the, okay, we've got the gating criteria, so two out of three, would, would say, as Ms. I think Moore said, we would not be conditioning, practicing, whatever, um, but also not using the, the local, um, the thing says lo- local, um, statistics, you would sure want to use the Wyandotte County numbers. And so, um, it's just being responsible, and not to name anybody, but if somebody among the board who's mentioned that they are very concerned about athletics and, and providing opportunities, that one would think many of us who support that would also be willing to serve. So those who are not interested to serve, we know you're, you're not interested in serving.
I think it's a point of trust, too. If we cannot trust our Chief of Staff to make, oh, this, I think this is more about trust. a, this, I think this is more about trust and it's sending a clear picture in my mind when I see that we do not trust our staff to make a, a, a decision. Common sense tells us that we have put these people into place. We trust them every single day on all aspects of this school. This is just a, a minor aspect, but we trust them wholeheartedly with our children, with our staff, with our people, and that we would not trust them to do this extra. We have to have a watch out, I'm sorry, a board member on there to make sure that they're doing what's right. I, I, I think it's a sense of trust that, that is here that we are accusing staff of not being able to trust that they will make the right decision after putting clear, clearly marked things into place after having our district nurse, our athletic coach, chief of staff, they'll not be able to do clearly what we assigned them to do.
So this is Yolanda and for, and for me, I mean, so I could, I could see a board member serving. We've brought board members into other meetings for, for other topics. So, and for me, it would not be, it would not be for trust. It's just me playing on a bigger team. And if our board is concerned, if we have members that are concerned and they want that extra ear there from a board perspective, I would be able to support that. This, and for me, again, this has no, nothing to do with trust. It has, it has let us have all perspective included in these decisions because COVID-19 is a big deal. Our community's health is a big deal. And so that's where my vote would come from because we pick and choose where we want to put board members for other things. And so I could, I could definitely support having a board member there again for those reasons.
And finally, I do want to share that in all of our conversations during preparation for this presentation and, and as we participate in all of the meetings with the health department and with the state, we share the same concern that all of you share. We do not want any one of our kids to get sick. We don't want any one of our staff members to get sick. So we do take this extremely seriously, but we do also welcome a board member. I think the more we, we work together, the better decisions we will make. So we don't necessarily see it as you're checking on us. It's just one more voice that can communicate with the board members and back to us. So I, I commit myself to participating in that committee also if, if it adds one more level of accountability. So whichever way you guys decide to go, we will welcome one or two board members. We will take the responsibility with the same seriousness, whether we have a board member on the team or not. So it's your decision.
Let, 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 let me add one thing to it, and this doesn't matter. The board can decide whatever it wants to do on this. But if you're adding a board member or board members to the committee, don't make it more than three because then it'd be a board meeting, which has to be noticed differently. And again, if you wanted to meet every Friday, you could do that too. But I'm just saying, if, whatever you do, if you're keeping it as a committee and you add a board member, you still have to notice that it is an open meeting. But if you have more than four board members who are on the committee or four or more who are on the committee, then it's a board meeting. Just notice differently. That's what I'm saying.
So we'll welcome one or two.
Can we call for a vote?
Are you back, are you back, Randy?
I believe Randy is frozen.
Is he frozen again?
And so are we voting on Dr. Jaeger's motion?
No, Janie make the motion.
To add one board member. Is that the motion?
To add, to have a board member on the committee and to, and to have a report sent out to all the board members after the, after the meeting is over saying what the decision is. And I don't remember who seconded it.
I did.
Or Dr. Nguyen did.
Well, since he's stuck and I'm the VP, can we go ahead and ask, go ahead and do a roll call vote, please?
Well, he'll still have to vote on it, so.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to give him a few seconds to try to keep it locked back in?
I guess we can vote out of order. He might have to call in to vote.
Tell him, tell him to a finger, but he may not still be able to do it.
I wonder if.
I, I think, I think Wanda could actually call the vote since he's out of pocket and then just get his vote. He's still going to be back on in a minute.
Okay. All right. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, no.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
It appears the yes have it, but we're still waiting on his vote to make it official.
We should wait for his vote because he's, it's clearly a technology issue. He's still trying to participate in the meeting, so.
Well, while we're waiting, I had a question about number one that we voted on and I had asked the question and I think Dr. Nguyen had, had asked the question while we're waiting. How are they going to determine attendance? Is it 100%? Is it 70% in order for the kids to participate? And I was waiting on a response. I did ask that before the meeting concluded. So how will we base it? We're saying we're allowing them to practice. We said we're going to base it on their attendance and what is considered passing attendance. Did you ever come to a conclusion on that?
I, I am asking several people to help me because to determine attendance, we have some kids that are in remote environments that maybe choose to do it in a different way later or that need help. And so they may not be attending the remote classes, but they have options to do things after. And so what I am doing is trying to get information from our remote learning plan and the people that best know that, along with, that's really the people I'm waiting on to find out how do, how do I get that information and not leave somebody out because they have a plan and they're doing it in that direction. I just need more information because I think it's a, it's the perfect question. It needs an answer, but I feel I'm a little bit, I don't have all the information because I know that the remote learning plan is following particular guidelines in regards to attendance. And we have some kids that have particular needs that, and I want to make sure I don't say and do something that would eliminate when I don't have the information. So I'm not dodging. I, I want to give you an answer, but I don't have all the information I need to.
Well, the reason I'm saying that, I hear what you're saying, but we need to be clear because if you're saying you're starting the 14th, you need to know what does it mean? Because maybe 50% is acceptable to me. That's 100%. And you're saying, that's so you don't muddy the waters. It needs to be clear and, and everybody needs to know. And if, I understand there are IEPs, there are different things, but what does all of that mean? And you can't put that out there if you don't have the answer to it.
And I think that's also where we wanted to get the input of principals and counselors and coaches. I don't think Tammy wants to make that decision on her own just because of all those different situations that we have, Ms. Page, and, and because one conversation the team was having today, anytime we're making a decision that affects schools, we also have to bring principals in because they know their schools better and they can make that determination. So I think, I think we all agree that we will have a very clear criteria. We don't have it today and we don't want to make it in isolation, away from the feedback from principals also.
But I, I guess my dilemma is we're saying we're starting the 14th and things aren't clear.
I thought Tammy, we had moved it to, we had pushed it one.
We voted, I thought, on the 14th because you were saying it couldn't be another week back. So now you're saying it's the 21st.
Tammy would be very fine.
So as I sent out a message to everybody at the completion of the board meeting, I also explained, you cannot start till you have all mitigation pieces in place, coaches, parents, communications and such. So in the summer, to give you an example, we said we started on June 8th. We literally had two schools start the 8th. We had one school that waited two weeks. We had another school that waited to the third week to get their pieces in mind, get their pieces in line for that particular school. And so today, when I had the first opportunity to talk to principals, they all felt comfortable taking another week to logistically have some answers to these. Dr. Nguyen asked me some, about five very valuable questions in regards to academia and they're all good questions. And I want to make sure that I understand, I have some input from that, that remote plan from those principals so that I, we're answering it correctly for each, you know, consistently across the district. But also I don't have all the information. I would like some people to be a part of that. So from that conversation today, it gave, also it gave our students a little longer to get physicals because they have to have the physical prior. And since we didn't do what we normally do in our district where we hold a physical after a school day and we bust them over. So we get a lot of kids participating with that free physical. Since we didn't have that available to do, we have a lot of families that are, still don't have physicals. So we felt giving that time gets those questions answered, those logistics set and kids a little more time in the physicals and we still have that ample time to work out. So, and that was based off of reaching out to the principals, Dr. Pitch, to let them have a part of that conversation.
Okay. Well, I don't, we had asked that before and everybody said no. So that's what I left with. And I didn't see, I saw your response to Ms. Humphries, but I never saw where it said the date changed.
And Tammy, could we have more information on the summer aspect? I mean, sorry, the question Yolanda had asked earlier relating to how we can help students?
Sure, sure. Yolanda, I want to make sure I, I'm restating the question. So you were wanting to know what else could we do in the fall?
Yeah. So my question really is, and again, I'm not as fluid with, with the, all the bird, all the words that you will be, but my question really is how do we help our students? So football is traditionally a fall sport as we know, and we're saying spring may or may not happen. And I understand that. So I understand a couple of things. I, I understand that the virus is very serious. I do get that. But I also, and I also understand that these students may or may not get scholarships. I just don't want to be the person that makes that decisioning factor for them. So really my question is how are we innovative or how are we thinking about other ways to make sure that we have some structure behind it versus saying, you know, if a coach can or can we have coaches? How do we put together something that says, no, for all of our students, we will provide them this? And you kind of answered that with an idea and I know it was an idea and I caught you. It wasn't planned. So I'm not holding you to that. I, that, that really is my question though.
I, I would, I, I, I think the best thing for me to do is to sit down with the leaders that we have, those coaches who deal with college coaches every day and find out what they've already implemented, find out if there's a better way as a larger group, meaning our mindset, our brain trust can create a virtual climate for our student athlete to sell their talent. Showcases are another way and you get a packet on a student athlete and it has information. And I know we have FERPA, it has information about their interest in studies, where they're at in their core classes, their GPA, you know, the same information. And we've had to find out what can we do, what can we put together and then tie that to any, any video we can put in, whether it be Huddle, last year's clips and setting that up as well as anything this year we can do in regards to that combined thought. We need to package that for every senior, every sport, whatever their sport is. There are some kids not interested in competing in college, so we would not make someone do it, but we want to know who's interested and we want to put something together. I would also reach out to the college coaches at different levels and ask them, what speaks to you? Because we know we can't give you fall film. We, there's so many things you can do in Huddle and all of our, all of our coaches have access to Huddle, which can break down clips, compare them to maybe, for example, maybe last year's junior class, we have an outstanding middle linebacker and we can compare his clips to some of the other top linebackers we played against and give that to a coach so they see it head to head. You know, there's so many things you can do now to showcase somebody's talent. But at the end of the day, coaches watch a whole game or go to a game for one reason, to see in that moment, can that student perform at the level against the competition, which values or rates them in that coach's eyes along with film. And the other thing is who you know? Who's going to speak for that student athlete to that college coach? It can't be the parent. It can't be the, just the high school coach. It's going to be a club level coach or somebody they can, you know, played with in the, in the offseason. We need to put those together so that when we're giving information, that person's getting something that's, we've never thought like this before because we've always had the season to rely on. And coaches are a masterful, college coaches, talking to high school coaches, club, travel coaches, they, they've got this down. But we've never been in a situation where we had to combine all that for somebody who doesn't have current film in the fall season. And the only thing we can put with that possibly is something that measures their athleticism. We have some very athletic men and women in this district. And we've got to showcase that. So I need, I need my brain trust, which is those head coaches that do this with their kids, with coaches. We need to sit down and say, this is important to us. Let's think big. Let's figure out how we can do this. And then find out what resources we have to provide. I don't know costs. I don't know, you know, I don't know what we're going to do yet. And I, I, it was, it was off the cuff. It was an idea that I know I've been working on because I think it's viable for our kids. And it'd be up to any kid. And there may be some kids that think they're college material that want to do this, may not be, but we can still provide them what we can, you know, and it's just a matter of be sitting down with that group once I know that's what we want to do and coming up with that plan and finding a way to incorporate in these workouts that are coming up so that it, we meet the UG stand, you know, order that's been given to us and that we can find out from college coaches, what do they want to see in this kind of an environment? And then somehow make it marketing sexy so that everybody wants to know about our kids, you know? And we might be the only ones doing this. So we get, we get more looks from coaches because no one else is putting this together. I don't know. I just know that something is better than nothing right now, but I like it to be the right thing. And I need more people. I need, I need to, I haven't had the conversation. Today's the first conversation I've had out loud. So I imagine there's a lot of coaches listening right now that are really excited about ideas, but it'll take a time to put it together. We'll figure it out. We'll get something.
And so that's just, I mean, I don't even know what next steps are, what if you need a, but that's where I, that's, that's my opinion and that's my opinion only. I don't know if we need a vote for you to come back and present something or what people need, but I think we owe that. I think we owe that to our students. I really do. And I understand, I do understand our numbers. I also have boys that are athletes and I'm going to be vulnerable here. Club ball is still going on. Club baseball is, is still happening and I, as a parent, have, have made decisions for my own, for my own students. So I understand there's a different liability here, but I just think we owe that to our, to our kids. We also owe them to keep them alive. Ms. Page, I get that, we owe them to keep them, keep them alive. So I understand.
You do a lot too, not just you, the whole.
I get it. I see my parents every day, I see my 93-year-old grandmother every day. So I, I, I am not speaking from a filter of I don't understand, I'm, I'm not.
Randy is back, yay.
Well, good, so because I still would like to have a conversation about the questions that I sent Randy yesterday morning that there has been no response.
Yeah.
Get Randy to vote.
I apologize for that thing. So, sorry, I missed all the discussion that just happened, everybody.
They need your vote, Randy.
Yeah, we needed your vote on whether we're to add a board member to that particular committee or the vote is four, two. We needed your vote.
Okay, I will say no.
Okay, so it's four, three. So the vote was approved. We need someone. I thought I heard at least three people or possibly four said that they would do it. So either we can rotate or one person can do it.
But don't they say it doesn't start? It says winter sports practice starts November 16th. So when would this response team meet?
Is it possible for them to send out the information to those where, who, board members who want to so they can rotate through? Do we have to make that decision right now?
The first question could be answered, please. When does the, they plan of a meeting?
The, the Friday before, they would meet and look at the last two weeks data to determine whether the first day of practice on November 16th.
Are you talking about the first in November?
Yeah, you, you're talking winter sports, so that's. And, and if we want, if we want to meet prior to that to publicly, you know, just practice that we could, but that would be your first set of practices that would be, that we need that gating criteria.
So we have time. So Ms. Ronstadt, I asked you, the board was, shared those, those suggestions that primarily deal with academics. And Ms. Clark, while we all want our Heisman Trophy winner to get the scholarship, if they're not academically eligible, they're not going anyplace. So I don't know what the standard is about eligibility for your, for, and Mike memo suggested it apply not only to student athletes, but any extracurricular activities. So not to, to make the student athletes feel like they were being picked upon. But one that would be, I guess, first would, there is no illegality to having COVID testing. First, before they start and every two weeks if necessary. What is your conversation been around those, that topic?
Can I interrupt for a moment, please? Dr. Nguyen, Mr. Lopez and Ms. Ronstadt. You said you presented those questions to Mr. Lopez in order for them to be able to answer them?
Thursday morning, yes.
Yeah.
Our meeting is a special meeting and we've covered everything. I would suggest that you would please give them some time to get the answers and then submit them to the board rather than us extending our time on this meeting?
I do apologize. I do apologize, everybody. Dr. Nguyen sent me those questions at nine o'clock yesterday morning as I had requested. So I do apologize, I didn't get to them until the evening and sent them to Tammy and Dr. Miguel until late in the evening. So that was on me for not getting to that, that to them sooner. So I do apologize for that and, you know, so I, I, I'm not sure that Ms. Ronstadt had sufficient time to get all those suggestions or questions, concerns addressed today. Ms. Ronstadt, if you, if you had anything that you wanted to add, I would totally welcome that. I do, since that was my mistake, I would.
Your email to me said that you asked Ms. Ronstadt to include it in her discussion today. So that is the basis of my asking, just her making some general comments.
Yeah, that's, I, I did, I asked Ms. Ronstadt if she had some, some comments. But I know I got the information to her late last night. So I know she probably had stuff going on today, maybe not had enough time to cover everything. If, if she does have anything that she would like to add, I would, we'd be more than happy to hear that out. But I would also ask for a little bit of grace so that maybe we can get some more information, maybe.
Let me ask for a point of clarification. Now, we have been off on a combine and it was never even mentioned in any of our communication. But this, talking about COVID testing and academic eligibility was. So I'm a little concerned that we can go off on a combine tangent, but we can't address a, a, a topic that was presented and is, and she, and was presented in, in advance, so.
Sure, no, I, I, I agree. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, we shouldn't talk about it. I mean, I think that's important enough to talk about. Ms. Ronstadt, I would just, do you have anything that, you looked like you were ready to say something, so I do.
Well, I, I understand the scenario. I, I felt comfortable in a combine. I didn't need anybody else's information to, to answer a question. But in regards to your questions, they were very good. I do not have enough information right now from the resources I need to really answer them correctly because I'm not as familiar with the remote learning plan, which sets some pretty high standards into the, some of your questions regards excuse absences, assignments, timeframes. I will answer those, I just need more time because there's people that I, I could not arrange to meet with today in the morning and prepare the other things they had on their plate prior to our early board meeting day.
Okay, I accept that. So, so generically, two questions. One, how are you as athletic director feeling about COVID testing of our athletes initially and then every, some regular period to?
The only information I have available is what they're doing in colleges, which is really totally pertinent to us. I don't know enough about the cost. I know in our area, it's a, they don't do asymptomatic testing. They're doing, you know, testing based on condition. I don't know if we have a lab that can handle the load. I hear that a lot with my people that I talk to at the Cogs Bubbles. Because I think your, your idea was to test regularly every couple of weeks. My concern about who absorbs the costs, it's not, we don't have free testing asymptomatic. I think there's a lot of questions I have because I don't feel like I have the information to be consistently accurate. It's new and that, that's, that's what goes through my mind.
Okay, but you do have our district nurse as your companion, so let's set that aside. What's the minimum grade average then for any of our athletes to be eligible? All, all my suggestion is that they get a C average or better.
So you have a district eligibility policy that requires, that requires everybody to be passing. And in addition, if they get to the mid-quarter progress reports, if they have, they don't have a 2.0 or they have failing grades, then they have about a two-week period where they either don't practice or don't play and they have to have a student plan to sit down and work with someone to meet those standards. So you kind of have them written into your eligibility policy. But it starts at the mid, I think they refer to it as the midterm. They didn't say progress before, mid-quarter. It's referred as the mid-quarter grade. And then you have also quarter grades. The, your district eligibility, the one you have determines whether they practice or play and that they have to have a support plan, student support plan. If they're not passing any class, you know, a class or they're below a 2.0. So that's already written, yes, that's already written in there.
Translate in letter grade, what is 2.0?
A C.
Average.
C average, 2.0. So we have that written in there.
Okay, so if you don't, then, then help me remember, I thought your presentation said that they had to be, the student had to be passing their course before they're able to start conditioning.
I, I think what I said when I was asked the question about attendance or grades, I said, if you want my personal opinion, athletically, we as coaches, athletic directors have a standard that says if you don't go to class, you don't play or practice. That's a standard we set. That's just something we tell kids, they need to hear that. And so when you asked me, how are you going to measure that? My, my question, my concern is you have a district eligibility policy. It doesn't say if you don't go to class or turn an assignment, you don't play. It says at the mid-quarter mark, you're going to get grades. And by those grades, if you have an F or you are below a 2.0, you will now have a student plan and you will also not practice. And then if you still can't get it up the next week, then you will not be playing. And so we have that built in, which is very similar to what you, you are expecting. But it starts after the mid-quarter. So I don't really, and, and that's due to the number of assignments you turn in. Some teachers have more assignments than others.
Well, Ms. Brownlee Page asked you about the attendance. So you probably don't want to get us mixed up. But I believe, and we, we can go back and listen to the tape. The, the way that this proposal was presented was that they, if they were not eligible, then they would not be starting. So there is a little built-in inconsistency there. Because if we're not, if you don't have recorded grades until the first quarter, then you don't have, unless you ask for verification from the individual teachers, you do not know that the student is performing in class or not.
Well, Tammy, I'll, I'll jump in here. So the way that the rule is written, and Tammy can correct me because this is her, this is her wheelhouse, is that the eligibility check is at the three-week mark. What we did last year is we installed grade checks every week. So before that third week, Tammy and her athletic directors will have access to grades. And Tammy, you can correct me if I misquote anywhere. So we will be checking grades, Dr. Nguyen, even before that third week. Although through district policy and through KESHA, the third week is the marker. And if it's not the third week, Tammy, just please correct the week.
The, the, the marker you're talking about is the mid-quarter grade and then they have two more weeks prior to us telling them they cannot, they're not eligible to practice and to play. But we did take on our own last year because what I found out is you, that's too long to not help somebody if they're struggling. So we started asking for weekly grade checks every Monday. And if somebody was not on track, on progress, on academic progress, then we wanted them either pulled out of practice, that's what we needed to get them with the tutor or teacher. And the coaches abided by that and we were able to really help our, both the student athletes and the number of kids that were still eligible at the end of the season because we were requiring them. One thing we found out though is there wasn't like, the first three weeks of classes, it's, it's hard to find enough assignments to verify a grade because some of them, now, now you have a new rule where they're putting more assignments in, but that was one thing we ran into last year. That's why I had said we want them attending. We know that in the first three weeks, we need to really watch and see how they're attending while they're forming those grades. And then we will look at academic progress, which we did last, prior to the nine-week or the quarter midterm, grade report, progress report.
May I suggest, Tammy, that once we have the attendance criteria that we're going to compile with the input from principals, coaches and counselors, that we share with the board so that you don't have to hold all of this to memory and, and to ensure clarity, that we provide that attendance criteria. And together with that, we also submit to you guys a written statement with the eligibility criteria so that you have it in front of you and anytime that a parent or a community member is wondering, you have it at the tip of your hands.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That work? And exactly, because we'll be happy, we'll be more than happy to provide that in writing so that everybody gets the same information. Well, the parents and students understand the responsibility. But, but still, and we all know athletics is notorious for playing the athlete, utilizing the skills of the athlete and neglecting the academics. That is not USD 500, that is at least United States nationally. Now, we, we have no dealings with international. But we know nationally, sports is notorious for utilizing the body and not providing academics. So that's. So we'll compile that and we'll provide it not only to you guys, but reaffirm it with coaches, with principals and make sure that we're focusing on the academic aspect and not just, I, I agree with you, Dr. Nguyen. We have to ensure that we, that we emphasize their students first and athletes second.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel, for that suggestion.
Next is adjournment.
All right, thank, thank you for that, Dr. Jaeger. I appreciate everybody's time today and all the hard work that you've put in there. Just as a little reminder, Dr. Nguyen requested at the last board meeting the, the dates for the board agenda prep. That will be sent out by Ms. Smith later today. I've asked her to send that out. So board members, be on the lookout for that email and, and sign up for some of those board agenda prep. If we have multiple people signing up for a, a date, we will work with you to make sure, we want to make sure everyone has a chance to, to attend a meeting if you haven't already. So we'll work with you to make sure you get, you get on that. The next one is next Wednesday at 4:00 PM. So be on the lookout for that email, Ms. Smith. Thank you for working with our board to do that. And with that.
Look, yes, I had asked Dr. Nguyen, because Dr. Jaeger and Ms. Drew have already attended, if she would come to the next board prep. And then I was going to check with Janie and Ms. Clark to see if they would do the next ones coming up. So that way we rotate and everybody has a chance.
In the past, we've sent out a signup sheet and with all the dates and then that way they could just fill it in.
Yeah, and that's what Ms. Smith is going to send out later today. I was able to get that to her, thanks to Bridget as well who worked on that with Ms. Smith. So we'll get that to everybody. And again, I, I think it's fair making sure everybody has a turn to participate and be a part of those conversations. So with that, everybody have an excellent Friday and a great weekend. Thanks so much for your time. Congratulations on week one. Thank you all, this meeting is adjourned.